Welcome to the Greenfield School Committee Wednesday, July 14, 2021. We'll start right here, July 7, 2021. And we're at the John's Own Community Center in Greenfield, 382nd Street. We are going to move right into our agenda. Did have some difficulties this evening, so I apologize for the late start. Secretary Johnson Musad achieved to a full conference.
Can you hear?
Here.
No, not well.
Glenn, is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay. Can you both hear?
It's very scratchy.
Okay.
Member Wall, can you save your ear for?
Here.
Okay, will you go ahead?
Here.
So thank you. We'll call the meeting for 6:22. The minutes that the school committee members have, the minutes for June 15 and June 22 meetings in their brackets. I would like to approve those minutes if possible as a consent item at the same time. Can I have a motion to approve both sets? Thank you, Member Collins, and a second?
Second.
Second, Member Exstrom. Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll do both to approve. All those in favor? You can raise your hand, or you can say aye. What if it's not a thing? No longer remote, okay? Looks like the ayes have it unanimously. There we go. Thank you all. And public comment. This will be our last call. We did already ask if anyone wanted to participate in public comment. Now's your chance. Anyone? Last call. Say no, I'm sorry. We'll leave public comment behind, and we'll go right into the meat of the meeting. Item number four, the superintendent selection discussion vote. I did do some thinking ahead of time about how to approach this discussion. And for everyone's knowledge and for specifically the members of the school committee, first of all, a reminder that this is all done in public session up to and including the final vote to make a decision on who to offer the position to as our first choice. I would also like to remind the school committee members that we are talking about professionals, yes, who have applied for a job, yes, and are aware of the format, yes, but also that it's important to treat this process with the utmost of respect at all times. The way that I would like to work through at least the first piece of how we're going to navigate this is, I'd like to, and I'll read this out first as a format so people can get a sense, and then we'll head into the actual pieces of it. But I would like first for, to hear from our search committee chair, which was Member Wall, with just a brief overview of the process and how she felt that that went. And I'll also give some quick observations before I turn it over to Member Wall. And after that, I'd actually like the folks who've done the site visits with our candidates to just briefly talk about the virtual site visits that we did with folks who either are their former colleagues or current colleagues, students and former students and parents from schools they've worked at. And then we will review the feedback we've received from folks who participated in discussions, parents, I'm sorry, students, faculty, staff, and leaders in the district. We'll review the school committee interviews that we had, the three interviews that we had. And then we will do an initial, what I would call a preliminary vote, and have each member indicate their top choice and see where we're at at that point. But I do think it's important to make sure that we're having really in-depth discussion about how we're approaching the final decision. So I would just quickly say before I hand it over to Member Wall that I did feel like this was, started being able to have five finalists come forward, all of whom the search committee was very excited about. And once we finished our interviews, having an incredibly strong pool of three candidates, all with really unique experiences, but incredible depth in terms of each of their professional lives and what they've chosen to focus on. And I'm just really grateful that we can sit there and hear and have this discussion and not have it be decided for us, who we might have to consider tonight, that we actually do have a choice that we can work on together to create consensus. Member Wall, would you like to give a brief overview of the process in general and how you felt participating and how it went?
Yes. We had a search committee made up of 15 members who came from parents, teachers, principals, central office. It was just a very diverse group who worked very, very hard. We interviewed eight candidates on eight different nights and chose five from the eight that we interviewed. Two of those dropped out of the search, so that left us with the three that we have now. We felt that any of these three could serve as superintendent of Greenfield and are very strong candidates, and we're thrilled that the school committee seems to agree.
Thank you, Member Wall. Let's review the site visits for these folks, three folks. So I don't know that I know which order they were done in, but I would be happy to start and talk about one that Member Exstrom and I did with the colleagues and former students, former colleagues of Bernie Adet, Dr. Adet. I actually took notes, which I don't usually do. And I was amazed that former administrators that had worked with him, current colleagues, teachers that had worked with him, and parents and former students. Every single group talked about him being an innovative and out-of-the-box thinker. I think three out of the five groups actually used the phrase "out of the box" for him. And just some of the things that I wrote down that I really liked, that he consistently encourages people to try new things in a safe way, and he's constantly leading toward excellence. They talked about that, which we heard from him when the school committee interviewed him, how he had been in corporate America with an MBA and decided to make a career change and started in schools by becoming a paraprofessional and literally working his way up through all of the degrees and certifications. One person said, "There seems to be nothing he is unable to do when it comes to teaching and learning kids." That he focuses on equity and the whole child. And we did ask for a little bit about social media and how he is on social media. And a student offered that he is already highly appropriately active for an administrator on Facebook specifically, is what they talked about. And there were consistent mentions of him being a role model for students by engaging every stakeholder and using the same skills regardless of which, whether he's working with teachers or parents or students. And just several comments from current colleagues that they would be really sad to lose him. And he's just been an amazing part of the team and is always a team player. And I think that sums it up really well in terms of, Vice Chair Exstrom, would you add anything?
Yeah, just, I think all of the separate groups that owe each other, really interesting. And they, and also that he was present, that he is active in his roles and takes pride in what he's doing, but it is encouraging to those around him and really encourages others to shine as a student, taking pride in it.
Thank you. And since I started with Dr. Adet, you can go on the alphabet. Who did the site visit with Dr. Dubarge?
That would be Wall and I, all speak first of them. I think the recurring theme, we felt the same sort of situation that every group just kept saying. Amazing to talk to. We didn't always agree, but the end before the talk, we came together and we collaborated. She was a strong listener, committed to do the work, whatever that meant. She was respected by every person that came to the table. They were all excited to her. They won't be very sad to see her go. But she had a very strong, people were talking about the strong factor in special ed and breaking the law. And that she really took a boots-on-the-ground approach. She got out there, she listened, she talked. She didn't come in and just change everything. She came in, she figured out what worked, what didn't, and moved forward from there. She talked to the teachers, she talked to all of her staff, community members, her students. Everybody was important to that conversation. When asked, we asked, "Do you have any times where you disagreed on something and it was difficult or there were challenges?" It's like, I can't think of it. I can't think of a time where I left the conversation upset or frustrated that I didn't get what I came there, even if we didn't, I figured out what we needed and we worked it out. One of the things I found interesting was when asked about budget process to the different groups, they all talked about how sometimes their city is very, and that she'd had to deal with that and handle them not wanting to give up money. And another thing I found really interesting was that they actually get a large number of choice but from the local area seat. They actually have a pretty large transient population. Kind of reminded me of some of the issues we faced here in Greenfield in maintaining that level of, you know, help for those kids. She had a lot of trauma training, aces work that she was doing to the group. I think that's really just the, she looked at her students as whole people, her teachers as whole people, her coworkers, as whole people, and worked moving forward. And really just ready to work, ready to listen, and ready to work together.
The only thing I would kind of reinforce was the stories we were hearing about. It sounded like the situation with the towns where she's working required diplomacy. Do what needs to be done, have the conversations. Karen said means true.
Thank you both. And Dr. Marnik Miller, did that, say. Okay, Member Collins and Member Wall, I am certain, Member Collins, that you two failed.
I did, but I didn't know I would.
Well, I'd really just, just a summary for us.
I can do this summary. Jean Wall and I did this site visit for Dr. Carol Ernie. She was consistently, I think we talked to four or five people where she's working now with a district that has a consulting group, the New York Leadership Academy, where she's been with staff since 2018. They do strategic planning, school districts across the country. And her, we talked to someone who was on the school committee, which was in Amherst, the director of them, talked to the current superintendent of Amherst. And early in her career, she was the principal of elementary principal at Cambridge School. We talked to staff who stayed in touch with her and knew her as a principal. I would say that everyone we spoke to was extremely enthusiastic and described her as someone who was brilliant in part 14, very collaborative, very well-liked, excellent interpersonal skills. That she really understood education. She'd do good teaching when she saw it. She had done some innovative work developing a guideline. I don't remember exactly what it was for, but it's being used nationally for reviewing. I think it's, something has to do with strategic planning that they were talking about. The high ability to develop materials that are useful. She's actively involved in her community. She lives not too far from Greenfield. She's very near. People that worked with her, I was most impressed that remembered her from elementary. Her elementary principal talked about how she was and how much they wished they could still work with her. She had excellent communication skills, so there wasn't as much information about how she is currently handling issues in public schools, because she isn't exactly employed by a public school directly. She's consulting to public schools, but there was lots of positive information about academic background, her brilliance in the work that she does, skill, and being just an educator who was not a coordinator.
Thank you. Member Wall, would you add anything to that?
I think that part of what I would add is the fact that someone said she's always mining for opportunities to innovate and thinks strategically and is quite efficient in her work. Brilliant was the word that everybody used, and it was quite interesting of people that would like to work with her in the future.
Thank you. Okay, so that was all three site visits. Thank you all for adding to the discussion with that feedback. And we did get some feedback that was submitted by a survey. Hopefully folks in the school committee had a chance to see that today. A survey went out to people who participated in the sessions during the day with the candidates, and they were able to put that forward. I did send it to everyone. Did you all have a chance to look at it? Yeah. Some helpful information, nothing shocking. I don't know that we have to really spend much time going over it, but it was helpful to see what other folks were thinking in terms of the candidates. Would anyone add anything about that feedback?
I would just say that since the public didn't get to see it yet and probably wonders what people said, that it was very similar to everything we just said about each candidate. It was very the same, like the same strengths we saw, the same places where we didn't have exactly all the information, they also, it was exactly the same. I wasn't shocked by the response. I was unchanged by getting a clear picture together. Because it's great to have the different views, and it's important, you know, everyone's got the best foot forward. Sometimes some people see something different, but everybody saw the same thing. And it was a good validation of the process of that.
Thank you. Secretary Johnson Musad.
Just to have a little more context so people know, this wasn't like a widespread, community-wide survey at all. This was four or five people who participated in the site visit with the superintendents on the day that they came for their interviews.
Thank you both for stepping in when I'm not very eloquent about that. Appreciate it. And then we had about an hour-long school committee interview with each of the three candidates over the past two weeks. And I don't really know how to approach this part of the discussion unless folks want to give general impressions about any of it. Member Collins, go ahead.
Well, maybe helpful to tell the public the kind of questions we asked. The questions were prepared, the same questions were asked every person. We were assigned questions. And they covered broad and also specific issues like, how do you see the relationship between superintendent and school committee? How do you see, how do you handle the gray area about the responsibilities of superintendent school committee? There were specific, a specific question about how do you conceptualize and strategize a budget if you have to start thinking about a budget 20 months before it's going to be finalized? There was a strategic question about transportation, like can you explain the pros and cons from your experience in considering whether you have your own fleet of buses or you contracted it? There were questions about how do you look at student achievement? How do you use data? Do you do data? Where is it useful? What do you think about? There was questions about, there were only nine questions, questions about student achievement. There were questions about how do you address meeting student needs and also being responsive to the public who's interested in its taxes. So a couple of questions on budget. There was a question on how do you address or what are your thoughts about schools trying filling in needs of students that aren't just typical learning, social service needs? How do you fit that in, see that in you? There was a question about sort of justice, current issues in handling discipline, things like that. So there were philosophical questions, how people feel, how they think. And there were specific questions that got more, what's your experience? How do you understand the issues?
Thank you. I think we got to see very well with those interviews, the style that each candidate would bring. None of them had difficulty answering. In my, I mean, and I would love it if the chat discusses if folks disagree, but I didn't feel like there was a missed question by only the three of them in terms of really missing the mark of what we were looking for. But I would hope if someone felt we really didn't get a great answer, they would compare, you know, with that concern. I felt like all of them really were able to articulate directly. I just realized, Mayor Wiedegartner, you also had a chance to speak with each of the three of them, knowing that they were going to be on vacation. Why don't we add that to the discussion as well, since you weren't a part of the interviews we did as committee?
Thank you, Mayor Wiedegartner, for that. Can everyone hear me? Earlier, I'm apparently yelling, but I'm trying not to yell now. I had about a 45-minute interview, 45 to 50-minute interview with each of them over WebEx. And I asked them three separate questions, some about their experience in finance, some about their experience in working with school committees. And I honestly don't remember what the other one was, but we talked a lot about the community of Greenfield, too. I thought it was my duty and my opportunity to tell them, to hear from them why Greenfield was a choice when I'm sure they have many choices that they could have gone to. And also an opportunity to tell them about the community that they may be able, may be working in. And I honestly feel like we have three really, really excellent candidates here. So I share that opinion with, I think, the rest of the school committee, even though we have not had any opportunity to talk about that, of course. But, so I'm, I'd like to find positions for all three of them if we could. But I don't think we can.
You're right on that.
So, but I'm saying they're, they're that good. And they each have unique skills and strengths that I think this community needs and wants and would benefit from. So as we come to a vote, I simply have to say, I'm still thinking. So, but they each impressed me with their directness, their willingness to answer the questions. There were no hesitations. I didn't feel like the answers, I mean, as far as I know, they didn't have any idea what I was going to ask them. And I felt like their answers were certainly not canned answers, but very responsive to the discussions that we were having and how I led into the questions. So we are in a unique place. I've done other school superintendent searches in my time when I was on school committee, and this is by far one of the better ones in terms of who we have left standing.
Thank you. Other impressions? Yeah. Can I ask Mayor Wiedegartner and Member Wall, were you able to watch the interviews that we did on JCTV?
I didn't. Glenn, I'm sorry, your mic is really not good. I think you, I think you asked me if I was able to watch any of the interviews.
That's right.
I was not. It was a pretty busy week and a half getting ready to go on vacation and getting all the work done in the city, so I apologize. I did not.
Yes, I did. I was present for one and watched the other two.
Do we have any other commentary, discussion around the interview, school committee interviews?
One thing that we didn't mention, or that Susan didn't mention, is that there was a specific question related to the Asara, and I need you to answer that question. Now, the community, I wanted to make sure that everyone understands that.
Thank you. Yeah, that was, that was part of the school committee. So I think we are ready to, what I'd like to try to do at this point is do a preliminary first round. Each member of the school committee would indicate who their first choice will be. And we'll see where we get with just that. We have to start somewhere with actually naming names. And I think now is the time of information. There's not a lot of huge discussion. I think everyone's trying to wait and see where their fellow school committee members are at. So, and Member Wall and Mayor Wiedegartner, you both can hear us okay right now? Okay. Mayor Wiedegartner is watching this. Sure. Can you hear us okay, Mayor Wiedegartner?
I can hear you fine.
Okay, great. So I will not start. I'm conscious that we may, I want to try to reach consensus. I am, I should outline this ahead of time. I want us to reach consensus and all be in agreement. I'm also very conscious that, and oftentimes in something like this, the chair will function as a tiebreaker. And yes, I want us to reach consensus, but more than that, I want us to have a decision this evening. So I'm going to hold out on putting my choice forward until we see where we're at after the first vote. If we all say the first, the same person the first time around, we will hold out on that.
Maybe, I mean, for me, in the facilitation world that I live in, we probably call this a poll, not a vote, because the voter kind of makes us think it's binding, so this is not.
Not binding, sure. Poll, yep. Member Collins, would you like to start? And we'll do you and Secretary Johnson Musad, and then Member Wall and Mayor Wiedegartner, and then we'll come around to the side of the table.
Would you clarify if you just want to name, or do you want to name and reason?
I want, just the name.
The name. My first choice is Christine Dubarge.
Thank you.
Dr. Dubarge is my first choice, too.
Thank you. Member Wall?
Uh, Dr. Dubarge.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Dr. Dubarge.
Member Karen?
Dr. Dubarge.
And Vice Chair Exstrom. And since we are all in agreement, including myself, she would also have been my first choice. I don't know that there needs to be further discussion. I'm happy to have discussion about why. I think that's important to the community. But I think if everyone can go with this, we'll make a motion, and the motion would be be move to request that the chair.
Authorize the chair to enter into negotiations with Dr. Christine DeBarge to assume the role of the next superintendent of the Greenfield Public Schools.
Thank you.
Those notes.
Those notes you made out of profit. Let's have someone else try to do it in their own words.
Well, I can do it. Same words.
Secretary Johnson-Lusad, go ahead.
I moved to authorize the chair to enter into negotiations with Dr. Christine DeBarge to assume the role of the next superintendent of the Greenfield Public Schools.
Second. Second from Member Wall. Further discussion. I actually, I actually would start. For me, more than anything, the tipping point was that Dr. DeBarge is actually the only one in the pool with direct experience as a superintendent in a K through 12 district. And for me, that puts her over the top because familiarity with the systems and functions of a central office and of a full K through 12 or pre-K through 12 district is, I believe, the first and foremost thing that Greenfield needs at this point in time. Other discussion, Secretary Johnson-Lusad, you look ready to talk?
I am. Yeah, that was the tipping point for me, too. Superintendent experience, extensive superintendent experience, and the way that she thought about the work, the way people talked about her, her role. I thought Dr. Mary Miller was really inspirational, and I thought we could really benefit from that, really fresh look at our curriculum and her perspective and on equity and those issues, I thought was outstanding, really kind of up to date in a certain way that I think we could really use more of. But I really felt that the superintendent experience was really important to me, and I did feel that Dr. DeBarge could grow, grow, I guess what I saw in her was the ability to let other people kind of take the spotlight and to get behind people, to shine as leaders and develop them. So I didn't feel that she needed to have all of the inspiring, not that she's not inspiring, but that she didn't have to have all, everything all in one package, that she could really work with a group of leaders and bring out the best in all of them, that our schools would be really well served by that.
Thank you for that. Other comments?
Amy?
Sure. Mayor Wiedegartner, go ahead, and then Member Karen, go ahead.
Oh, I couldn't see Member Karen, so I'm sorry. Well, so far it's unanimous. Having said what I said about all three candidates, and as I said, their strengths are exceptional. It was really the actual superintendent experience that really at the last minute caused me to take the vote that I took, or made, made the suggestion that I made.
Thank you. Member Karen?
I agree with everyone else. The experience really helped. And as Member Johnson-Lusad mentioned, the ability to help others, but there was a question in our interview process about social service. And everybody had wonderful answers. But her answer struck very true to me because she didn't just talk about mental health or trauma, she started talking about getting broken bellies, doctors in drive-up clinics, and dentists, and to make sure our kids, that, it just felt very real to our community. And what we need is all of those things. I love, I was with Mayor, could we hire all of them in different ways? Like, they were all wonderful, thoughtful, innovative, supportive, collaborative people. But that one entered really wrong truth for our community. And she said, right, and she said, you can't fire her. And that just was like, that was the seal.
Here goes it. Other comments? Member Collins, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I thought Dr. DeBarge's answers were the most professionally mature in terms of being able to integrate a bunch of different, you know, theories and practice and best practice and knowledge, and to look at things broadly. People get to superintendent experience with different career paths. And a big issue for me is someone who really understands individual students. And she, her background coming in, not just from general curriculum, but she's been a people personnel director, special order director. She's been in one or another superintendent role for multiple years. But every question we asked, even about the role of the school committee, one of the questions, oh, what's role of school committee? Why is that important? Her thoughtful answer about looking to the future, the important role of getting people serving because they're planning the future of education, it's just, she had a very mature approach. And some of her answers showed that she understands school law, which is something, I was just interested in someone had a depth, depth of understanding without bias. And her answers about her concern for children, one of the things that really impressed me about her was an answer where she was talking about budget, but she said, you know, if you don't supply the support that students need at a young age, you're going to pay later on because they haven't learned the basics. That's something I care a lot about. So I thought her answers, and she's experienced, and that was just the maturity of her experience was what tipped her.
Thank you. Vice Chair Extrum?
I think what struck me the most when you were having the interview was that she responded to our, all the questions, multiple, there are multiple questions within them, as you have. She specifically answered each of those questions at separate points during the, sort of, during, responding to number one, there's three or four different things within it. And she responded to each point specifically, as opposed to sort of the more theoretic ones. I do want to say that I was intrigued by Dr. Adet. And I think it's, you know, when, when the chair and I did our site visit, it was really, I've never experienced a time where I've interviewed or been with several different groups of people across the span of someone's career, and the response and the impression was the exact same, all of them. And then what, what that showed me is that really he's the person that he is. And having a background in business, meaning I shared a budget with me. And also that, I mean, that he was in business, realized he didn't like it, started him being a terror. Those are things that, that's a goal branded person who, who very clearly was supportive of those around him when he was their boss. And that really gave me a lot of pause. On the other hand, having been on the school committee for the last time, I also realized that this district, right now, someone who's been a superintendent for years, and knows kind of situations, and has a background, and says, this is what you do, and can give me a reason for that confidence that I talked about. That's, that was what sold me.
Thank you. Member Wall, go ahead.
Yes. I would just like to say that when she was here at Greenfield High School, speaking with the teachers and the parents and the children, I was there outside to tell everybody when time was up. And she was so interested in what everybody had to say. And she, we had only one parent come for a long period of time, and she treated that, she went and sat by the parent and listened to everything she had to say. And she, she's a delightful human being just as a person, much less as a superintendent. I was very impressed with her.
Chair, could I suggest you take a few minute break and see your shore position?
Member Collins, we have a process in place.
Okay.
Yeah, you need to vote. We can do that. I have a phone number in Miami. We worked all the details out.
We worked all the details out ahead of time. Are we ready to vote? Let's, actually, Member Johnson-Lusad, would you go ahead and do a phone call vote for us on this one, please? It's important enough.
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrum?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson-Lusad?
Yes.
Chair Poirotti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner? Motion carries.
Unanimous. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Member Wall. Thank you to the Mass Association of School Committees. Tracy's here with us tonight. Thank you for leading us through this process. It is huge, just huge, to be at this point in our deliberation so quickly and so unanimously, I think, having, even having such great camp. So I think we're on the right track. And yes, we will make that phone call now.
Might I take a recess? Madam Chair?
We're going to take a five-minute recess of the meeting right now. So does that mean Member Wall and Mayor Wiedegartner didn't hear any?
Correct. Sorry.
I will start again. We did contact Dr. DeBarge, and she is thrilled to enter into negotiations to be our next superintendent. Additionally, she was in Jamaica celebrating her 25th wedding anniversary and still answered the phone. I don't know what that says about her marriage, but certainly says something about us. I would not have made that joke if it hadn't been for her husband kind of making that joke first in the, in the background on the phone. I have a little more poof than people might think. So that's very exciting for all of us. She's back for Monday and will enter, begin to enter, will enter negotiations at that point. So it's good news for us. And, yes. And I do want to, as much as I'd like to go out and celebrate with a drink of my own, let's actually go into the rest of our agenda for the evening. We have, next up, the Green River School eating system. And we have George Vanderlander here from the city to talk with us. Oh, that's one way to do it. There you go, George. So let's just introduce this a little bit. The first thing I want to do is, for the school committee members, I do want to direct you to some late materials, as well as anyone who's, who's at the meeting. The materials for this discussion, this discussion here are posted. to the materials for the meeting for tonight. They're actually in the second posting of materials. And it's just a one-page item, the bid for the Green River School heating system. I don't know if, Mayor Weidergardner, if you want to say something before we talk with George? Is there anything you want to add to the discussion about this?
No, no, I'm happy to hear from George, and I'll be on for a little while longer.
Okay, okay, great. So, George, walk us through what we're doing here and what we're looking for from the schools.
About five years ago, I went to Mayor Martin's, said the system. About five years ago, I went to Mayor Martin's, said the system. So at that point, the, Carol Collins, a local branch, who put her new system in. She hired a consultant who, at the time, for, basically, price, there were only one person that, or one contract, you know, price was a lot higher. But at that point, I suggested that we just look at a basic heating system like we have from the schools, like the school had. No requirement of air conditioning. So we're now with procurement, and I did process it, like the.
George, you've been asked to talk to the mayor.
I did my hands out, too, I guess. So we went out to a consulting engineer and had them design a system back with a price of $894, about $895,000. At the time, we only had appropriated $460,000. And that was based on this contractor who did bid the job. It was so high, we asked him to just give us an idea of what a water system would cost. I don't know how accurate that number was he put together, so we didn't pay for that estimate. And that was three years ago. So what we're looking at now is a schedule to you of about $479,000.
And the other 400 and change dollars, 400,000 so dollars, that was appropriated to City Council. And that, I feel like, was like January or February 2020. Does that sound right?
I think so. Yes.
And I say that because I feel like we had discussions about Green River School potentially being ready for occupancy for this past fall, fall of 2020. Do you recall that as well?
Yes, to do, and put a timeline together, kind of built through the pandemic.
And that scheduled start was assuming that it was going to cost around $500,000? Or assuming that it was going to cost around almost $900,000?
No, that was when we thought it was going to be around $400,000.
Okay, thank you. So I'll open it up. I didn't, I wanted to just make sure we had that timeline, at least the close, the near timeline, kind of under everyone on the same page. Discussion from the school committee, we're ultimately looking for, like, so I would say, I would look for it first, so we can discuss, a motion to approve. Can you give me that amount again, George?
$479,000.
A motion to approve $479,000 for the purpose of reaching the total amount needed to install a heating system in the Green River School based on the estimate prepared for us today. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
That's the mayor and a second. A second from Member Collins, and a discussion. Member Karen, please.
Hey, George, thank you for coming in to talk to us. This really helps answer some questions I have. I feel probably as you do, that Green River Heating System has been haunting us for an unreasonable amount of time from conversations about what we'll put there when we finally put the heat in to how we're going to get it paid for. Can you talk a little bit about, it sounds like the first estimate was kind of an off-the-cuff estimate?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Do you think the, this almost double, basically, change, do you think it, can you talk about why you think it's so much more? I mean, we all had people give us estimates that were nowhere near what they were supposed to be. But, I mean, I know that some things have dramatically increased the cost post-pandemic. I don't know if that's played a part.
I think somewhat, but then I asked, is price still accurate? Excuse me. I, for me to understand, be able to estimate these numbers would be difficult. Just don't get involved in equipment, labor, the scale, right? So I have to go with what good engineering outfit says it's going to cost. And I have to go back and think, we asked for that number for the heating system very quick. Here's a contractor that spent a lot of time putting together those, this heat pumps. Then we turn around and say, well, can you give us that number real quick for a water system? So there are very good outfits. I didn't expect very good number for, basically, back in the morning. It's been the engineering time. So I really think that number is superior. Given inflation three years later, so I trust this number. I don't think it will be exceeded when we go out for bid for the contractors trying to get this price. So I think this is enough to exceed that.
Thank you very much for that insight.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up. The 10% contingency, is that just a little bit of wiggle room? That's the way I understand it.
That's pretty normal. I'm sure the number's as far as the cost of equipment and labor probably.
Thank you.
Mayor Weidergardner?
So I have Member Extron, and then Member Collins, and then I'll sit, I'll have you, Mayor Weidergardner. So I just want to make sure I'm following. So this, so the first estimate that we received, that was around the $800,000 that Mayor Martin had asked for, was for a system that was more high-level than what we had in the other schools at the time. And when that number, or just a different system that didn't necessarily work like.
Right, well, sorry, I don't know.
So, so when Mayor Martin, you all went for, when Mayor went out and got a proposal or got a response, it was based on specs that he didn't given that were being, or that had been given, that were beyond what was currently heating systems in the other schools, yes?
Yes, yeah, it was an actual heat pump system, by heat.
Okay. And so, so that was an 800K, different people saying. And then the second step was to say, okay, if we just did a water system, and that was like 400 whatever K.
That's their first estimate.
And so, so it's interesting to me that the number for the, the system that was originally sought is similar to the number of what we're looking at here. I just want to confirm, this 894, 646, is for the water, is for the second?
Hot water system, yes. The one bid we got, that heat pump system, $706,000. That number today would be.
And we've only gotten bids from one, 10%.
We haven't gotten any bids from any contractors on this system. We're at the point where we're ready to shoot the documents to go out.
I can't hear.
Sorry, Jeanne, you can't hear me?
No.
We weren't able to hear, Number Extron, is that right?
I did not hear any of George's at all with the numbers.
I'm sorry. Can you hear that now, Jeanne?
Yes. If you put your mouth close to the mic, I think I can hear it.
Okay, sorry. Want to cover that again?
So Jeanne, did you hear what I had asked?
Yes.
Okay. So I just said that that was a more sophisticated system than what we're proposing now, and that we have not gone out to bid yet for this. After we have the bid documents ready, we have the drawing package ready. As soon as we have an agreement on the cost, we'll go right out to bid on it. But I do, we do need to talk about the fact of the schedule. The estimate is like a 29-week schedule from the time we send bids out to end the construction, which would put us in the middle of February, which means we would have to put supplemental heat in that building. It's winterized, there's no water in the building presently. If we can get through this winter, in a while now, we can have the proposal out, contractor selected, and get started in March, and usually by September, we can ready to go for the next year.
Okay, thank you. Member Collins, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So our motion is a not to.
I don't think, I don't think we actually worded it that way.
Okay, so that's how I heard it mentioned. And am I correct that we're not going to reduce our budget for students, but we'll find grant funds for this expense?
We have not identified how we would pay for it.
All right, and just a question for you. I remember historically, there was some issue, like we'd get the heat, but we wouldn't have the controls, or we'd have some controls. This is the complete system, all the controls everywhere.
Absolutely. It would also. It would also be on the energy management system for the rest of the schools. So I can monitor that from anywhere.
Mayor Weidergardner, are you with us?
She is not.
Okay. Member Wall, and then Secretary Johnson-Luca, and then Vice Chair Extron.
My question would be, with the climate change impending, we would not have air conditioning in this school. Is this what we want? What would be the price if we did many splits that would both heat and cool the school, which might be a necessity going into the future?
Yeah, Jeanne, that would have to be readdressed by, I'm surprised you're going to ask this question, because I'm not sure where would we go at this point. We have a, we have a design and an estimate from one company, and we have, with the heat pumps. And we have a design and estimate from another company for the hot water system. So if I was to go back to the first design firm that put the heat pump system together, I mean, that's possible. We could do that. I would think there might be some more engineering funds required. Not a lot, but a couple of things concern me about using them. One was, we only had one person bid that contract. And I talked to one contractor who is well-known in the area, has done a lot of work for us. He said the bid package was incomplete. I didn't feel we had enough information to put a good note in. So I'd have to address that with this other outfit. The fact they did not want to put the hot water system, not sure why, unless they had taste for green field in their mouth. There's, if we want to look at that again, I'd like to get back to you with a plan on how we would approach getting you that number, Jeanne, that cost to put together or put a heat pump system.
Well, to me, to spend almost a million dollars and still not have what we need for the school seems foolish, especially since we're not going to have it for a long time. Can't we keep exploring and find out all the options?
Yeah, there are, I think if we go that route, we'd have to decide, what do we want air conditioning? Do we want to air condition just the classrooms? Do we want to air condition that central library area, which is open to all the hallways? And of course, the gymnasium and cafeteria gets pricier every time we try and air condition more air.
But we will have a superintendent now, I hope, who will have views about maybe what that school could be used for. You know, it, everything is coming together now in a way that it wasn't before. And so it seems to me like it's premature for us to vote to spend that much money in a year when our budget has been reduced for something that's not what we want anyway.
Anything else, Member Wall, right now? Secretary, you said no, you didn't want to speak. Secretary Johnson-Luca, go ahead.
What would it mean if we did vote for this tonight, in terms of where would that money come from? Who would it be paid for? Would we authorize something without knowing where it's?
So I guess we need to keep discussing, because I was, I was thinking that someone else might ask these questions, because as we know, I am not a budget person. So let me start very basic, and let's see where this goes in terms of our discussion and our problem solving. My first question is, I have only had school committee experience for a short time. I don't ever remember us being asked to vote on what, to me, seems like a capital request in this way. And George, this is, I believe, the first time that we've seen you come to us for something like this. Does this feel to you like an unusual process? Does this feel like this should be a capital expense? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just, like, I've never seen you here with us before. So how did we get to this?
Yeah, I can't answer that, to be honest with you.
And that's fine.
That's more the political side of things. I just want to put a heating system in the school.
Totally, and that's fine. And I don't want to put you on the spot like that. I guess I would also ask that, if Andy is on and able to speak, Andy Picard, am I way out in my field that this is unusual?
Chair Poiety, I'm here, yes. I've not seen it, in our experience in other places, done this way. Honestly, normally, in anything like this, through a capital expense, such as we're talking about, there would be an appropriation identified already for the funds. And so, yes, I would say, and under mass law regarding school finance regulations, unless you're a regional school district, but even then, capital expenditure is a responsibility of the city or town.
Sometimes I don't know what I'm talking about, but I think that I know what I'm talking about. I think that might be one of these times. I really, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I just don't understand why a request like this is in front of us. Dr. Will, do you have?
I can answer that, Chair Poiety. In terms of the, looking at the capital expenditure of this amount, it is highly unusual, and I've been in this position for almost decades, for it to come from a general operating fund. It comes at the expense of students. That concerns me. We do have some Easter grant money, but that money is money that was designed to help us weather a storm in the aftermath of the pandemic.
Learning laws, yes.
And, yeah, there are issues.
Right.
And there are some, some funds that can be designated for HVAC, but that HVAC is associated.
Airflow. Thank you.
Or spreading of germs, so.
I knew I had another question. And so, George, these estimates were all prepared prior to all of this hubbleoo that we had around HVAC systems in the schools as a part of the pandemic. Is that right?
Right.
So I don't know, perhaps you don't know, and that's fine. But is it possible that the engineering of these could have changed, knowing what we know now? Like, I don't know how many of our teachers are on this, but that's what, my next concern is, we're going to put in a new heating system, everyone's going to know. Everyone's want to know, is it, you know, do we have air purifiers built in? Like, is it, is it safe to, you know, if we, if we have continued coronavirus issues, is it safe? Is it better than the systems that we have that are older? Do you know anything about any of them?
Yeah, it, it certainly a better system than, than the, than the older system. Absolutely, the system that we're taking out. Um, you know, those were 1945 vintage ventilators. There, there was nothing, uh, especially vested in the design to deal with the, uh, the COVID virus at the time. I think personally, there's a lot of technology out there that is still unproven. And I see a lot of cities investing a lot of money in some of this technology. Uh, what I would go with and Siemens, uh, who is our EMS vendor, supports this, is the bipolar ionization technology. That seems to be fairly well proven and can be adapted to anything that moves there. A ventilator, an air handler in the attic. But I, I think these air purifiers you have are also a great thing to have in the rooms.
General, the general consensus I hear you saying is anything that's newer is going to be better than what's in there now.
Absolutely.
And in our older buildings as well. Okay. Dr. Wall and then Secretary Johnson.
Um, George, are you aware whether or not this will heat the CFMs? Do you just need to go with?
Yeah, I don't know that, Jean, to be honest with you. That would sound like, I would have to go back to the engineers.
You're talking about the air exchanges?
Yes.
And isn't it likely they wouldn't know until it was in and could be tested?
They should be able to.
They should be.
Able to spec it out based on the number of square feet and what the exchange would be and what the rates would be, the kind of equipment they would need to fulfill that.
So it's not just madness, there's a method to it.
There is a mathematical formula.
Okay.
Is there a, is there a set, uh, number of air exchanges now that people are stressing?
Um, the consensus is that it should be somewhere in the four to eight range. The higher the better.
Okay.
So we've been striving for six to eight here for our spaces that we have right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Secretary Johnson Musa and then Member Hollins. And then Member Wall, did you have your hand up too, Member Wall? Good, yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to refer this topic to the Health, Safety and Facility Subcommittee meeting and have them report that at our next meeting.
So we already had a motion. Are you, you, you want to table the motion to approve the funds? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like we had it, have enough information. Who made the original motion? Was it the mayor who's now signed off, I think?
I think it was the mayor.
Okay. Um, I'm just wondering about only procedure at this point of, of, we have the motion and we're, I guess we should just vote to table the motion for the funding and then, uh, uh, take up the motion to refer elsewhere after that? Does that make sense for a procedural sampling?
As far as I know, yeah.
Uh, you guys have questions on procedure? That, you want to talk more about this?
I want to talk about not tabling and waiting on that motion. We just not voting to table that motion, do you understand?
No.
If we take a vote to table, I can say, no, I don't want to table this conversation.
Uh, you'd be just tabling the motion to appropriate the funds right now.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I can have the rest of my conversation if we switch the voting. I'm not really getting back to that. I have concerns about us sending it to Health, Safety and Facility yet. It sounds like our largest.
I also have concerns, I'm not sure that's the right place to send it. So that's why I'm trying to figure out procedurally. Um, Member Hollins, do you have a suggestion around the procedure? Okay, so just hold on.
I have no idea about procedure. Sounds like people want to talk more. So why don't people talk more and then later I'll make a motion to table this existing motion?
Okay. Yes, please. Um, but Member Extron, who was next, Member Karen, then Member Extron? Oh, I'm sorry, Member Wall, Member Wall was next. And then, okay, let's start with Member Wall and then.
I would say as a member of the Capital Improvements Committee, that this should go back to capital improvements because we'll start working again on that in October. And, and if there is that 400,000 that was authorized by, uh, the council that could be used for any engineering studies that needed to be done to make sure we have the best system possible, right, George? Can't that?
Actually, I, I think we need to make sure we review that, uh, heat pump system well if that's the direction.
Right. Well, you know, I just think that we should try for, uh, a system that would work year round in that school so that we could use it year round. And, and that there is money for engineering if that's, if it, that's needed because there was 400,000 plu, I don't remember the exact number appropriated by the council. And I think that we need to quit playing around with this and get what the schools want. If everybody thinks that it should be an, uh, a, a system that is, uh, usable all year round. I, I have no problem at all going back to the council and saying, here's our problem and, and please help us. I think they would be willing to do that.
Thank you, Member Wall. Um, let's do Member Karen and then Member Hollins. And then, did you also want to speak, Vice Chair? And then Vice Chair Extron.
So I think we have two things facing at the moment. One is, do we believe capital expense? And if that is the case, then the Health and Safety and Facility Subcommittee should meet and discuss what kind of heating system we believe we should have with the wonderful advice of George. We don't actually know anything about heating system. Still have a steam heat from 1925 in my house. I got this. Um, and then we also have the issue of what kind of system. So that's my hesitation in referring to the Health and Safety and Facility system. Whether or not it's a capital expense is a large conversation. A subcommittee can't make that conversation. I think we have to agree on that. Maybe it's our new superintendent. I'm not sure. Uh, but I think there's two, maybe two more, not just one. And the other thing is, I wish the mayor was still on. I'm not remembering the exact details about getting kids back in that I know we're already. By taking money to keep that building, we had to put children in building by a specific. Dastly beyond that. And I'm certain COVID helped us with that situation, but I would like some research done into where we're in that. Uh, just because you said we take about 29 meets.
Yeah.
And, um, clearly we can't put kids in without a heating system, but I just want us to be very. And gain that more work.
You're referring to, there was work done in Green River and we took mass school building authority funds to do that work. And that required that we then use the school, bring it back online and use it for educational purposes.
Correct, yes. There was very rigid rules about the main purpose of the building. I mean, what we were talking about, we had floated all kinds of ideas about revenue streams and all of that, but it's very specific that it has to be like a nature building, nature building. And it had to be done within a time period. And I have lost track of that time. I've decided that COVID erased all of my brain, so I don't want to say a specific number.
That's funny.
But it's definitely beyond that. And one of the things, clearly you can't make that happen. At some point, different councils will be like, hey, you keep pushing this option.
Right. Member Hollins.
Yeah, I wanted to say that this is a capital expense. And that, um, you, we can't vote this amount of money without knowing what's the revenue source. So I was going to address that. And there is a capital planning committee on the city, which Member Wall mentioned. There's also planning on construction committees. And you, you would never have, almost never have superintendent full set of capital expense. Fix the roof, fix the heating, replace the windows inside a school budget when you have city capital. However, we have, it starts with, you know, have a small amount of money in our budget every year for something that came with like a couple windows out doors at times. We had a little bit of emergency, but it's only 50,000. And the issue with this, there's a couple of issues with this. One is that every year this building's closed. So this is like building deterioration, which then when you want to go use it, the cost of getting in. If we went through this once, getting back into, into this store. And when we originally closed it, we had 120 students in the school. They were temporarily speaking threats, things about like five years. But there's some, this situation is interesting. So we have to look at the deterioration of the building as this goes on. Also, apparently the school system has some culpability in the play of getting this done. We're supposed to, I don't remember all the details. We were asked for specific plan, I, building. So we have a little bit of, um, of ownership of the delay and excessive costs, which in my mind would be okay. If we could find the funding, definitely I would be able to send from our operational budget to educate children. But there might be some other money we could bring in from a grant that allows for building, building. To look at that, so I just think that piece, um, and to know what kind of heating system this is, does make it sensible to go to the committee of subcommittee in the school facilities. But it is capital. There is money, there is a capital planning committee. We've been through it, there's, there's a tension about the school's role in this getting delayed. And I think we should look at it, see how we can collaborate, find a, and get this done because we're going to need the building. So I don't care if we stop the session, but I wanted to say it, yeah.
Agreed. Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Extron and Member Karen, what are you raising your hand again? Vice Chair Extron.
So I do want to echo what Katie and Susan have both said. And this is a capital expense. And, um, the more time that I spend on the school, the more, um, bonus, I'll say, of city costs and expenses are being pushed back on the school committee. And the, this is the cost of having providing education for the student. And it's a capital expense because the city owns schools, the school district doesn't own schools. And so I just, I, I feel like this is just sort of more of a slippery slope of, yes, we're going to cut your budget, but we're also going to pay for it at the same time. So I, I really struggle with that. Is it a capital expense? Is it necessarily something that's?
Thank you. Further discussion?
The only thing, other thing I'd like to say is we really do need to keep making progress on this for one reason. And that is if we do go with the hot water system, want to use natural gas. We still have kind of a hold on that with Berkshire for gas, but I don't know how long that's going to last.
Sure. Thank you for that. Sure. Thank you. That is important. Um, I think that we should vote on the motion that's currently on the table and then procedurally go on from there. Are we, anyone disagree with that? The motion would be to, to basically spend the money, which we, that, that's the motion that we discussed under.
But if we vote no, does that mean we can't address it again for six months or whatever that period is? Or nine months?
Put the motion on the table. Put the motion on the table so that we're not preventing us from being able to take it up again?
Right.
Okay. So, uh, do we take a separate motion to table? Is that? Okay. So would someone like to make that motion?
I'm going to put this motion on the table.
I carry Johnson Musa with the motion in a second from Member Hollins. Okay, further discussion before we vote. Let's go ahead and, and vote all those in favor of putting it on the table or the chairman or say aye. Aye. That looks to be unanimous with all here. The mayor is not in attendance, so we put it on the table. And now what else would we like to do at this time related to this top? Member Hollins.
I'd like to suggest we, um, as expeditiously, if that's the right word, as possible, have this reviewed by a subcommittee, both the system, the amount of money, the process, um, and to try, try to see if we can move this.
I appreciate that. So, Member Wall, can we, the school committee, work with planning and construction? I know that capital projects only meets at a certain time of year. Um, the, the planning and construction, they meet more regularly, is that, is that correct?
That is correct, and we would love to work with George on this. Our, we are not having a meeting in July, but we're having the, a meeting the second Tuesday of August.
Okay. And, um, Member Hollins is our representative on that? Is that correct? You're our representative. And Member Wall, separately from your school committee role, you chair planning and construction. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I did hear very clearly from Member Hollins, and I want to acknowledge that, and also from, uh, Member Karen a bit too, that, uh, there's a little bit of, of culpability from the schools on delaying this. Delays hurt all sides and all, everyone's pocketbooks. Um, and so I want, I will have a conversation with the mayor. It was the mayor that asked for us to take this up and vote on it tonight. Um, that we would, we intend to work collaboratively, but we want to work on this, uh, basically through a different path at this point. Is that, is that an accurate representation? So does that, I will talk to the mayor. We will, in some capacity, be present for any discussions that happen at planning and construction and also at capital projects. Does that sum it up for now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. George, I hope you don't feel like you were put on the spot tonight. Um, I, it's very, it, it, it's really helpful to have you in front of us. And I hope this is, you know, as we, if we move forward with any of our projects, I hope this is something we can kind of repeat so that we know. Um, this is definitely the first time I ever saw, uh, you know, anything that it came close to identifying for us what it is that's happening over there or even what it is that's happening with any of our capital projects. So I think it tells us a little bit about, we probably need more information, more of the time about what we're, um, what we're doing to the school buildings. Um, and we certainly want to work more collaboratively with the city as well. Um, I appreciate you coming to talk with us. Is there anything else you wanted to add to the discussion?
No, other than just whatever I can do to help move forward with this process, let me know.
We absolutely will, and thank you for being so accommodating. Yep.
Questions make sense? Is it, is that sort of the same thought pattern you would have when you were thinking about this in a larger scale?
Yes, absolutely. I anticipated a lot of what you were going to ask and then I was waiting for the, the air conditioning to come up, Jean. So, uh, we got some more, we have some more homework to do for sure.
She can't help being from Louisiana.
Most settlers, I mean, I, I get her.
I wondered if you were also, I, your accent does sound like you've got a little bit of that in there.
Not that far south.
Very few Americans can say they're from that far south, right? Louisiana, that's.
That's far south.
It is. George, thanks again, and thanks for being so patient with us.
Thank you.
And we are, we are on to our next guest who's been patiently waiting. I can tell he might have slipped into a coma over there, no?
You're on your podcast, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, so many. Just kidding, Justin.
So close, but so far.
We have, we're moving into section six of the agenda. I jumped ahead to the communications plan, but our, our first item is, uh, Andy has been waiting so patiently, the school business manager from TMS, uh, regarding the closeout of fiscal year '21 budget and the, um, fiscal year '22 budget update. Andy, go ahead.
So we sent in your pack, it's the preliminary closeout information as far as '21 goes. So we sent in your pack, it's the preliminary closeout information as far as '21 goes. We've been in contact with Liz Gilman on the city side as to, you know, the way that the normal closeout process proceeds. You'll see there is a balance left in the local appropriation that we anticipate since we do have settlements of contracts, that we will be using those funds to address retroactive pays due. So what'll end up happening is that that amount will be reduced as we do the retroactive payments. And then any balance left would be, we would address the use of that balance as we've talked in budget finance, whether it's prepaying of sped tuitions or appropriate reclassification of expenses out of revolving accounts to the general fund. And Liz Gilman, we have an August deadline for that, so we're in the business office and payroll are diligently at work on doing both the retroactive calculations and our reclasses as we normally close out the year. So before I go on to '22, are there any questions as to FY '21? Oh, I do, my apologies, but hold your, hold your questions, hold. As I, at the last meeting that I attended when we had that first round of budget transfers, because of the fact that you approved, because of the fact that between that then and now we've had the settlements, I have not processed yet the second round and admittedly the first round as well of the final budget transfers because I wanted to, once those retroactors are calculated, it'll give us that sort of the one bite at the apple of doing the final budget transfers that we talked about. So I just wanted to add that. So now I can answer any and all questions you might have for FY '21.
I can tell you, Andy, that Member Extron is sitting here furiously circling numbers. I don't know what it means, but she has a furiousness about her tenderness.
So as I'm just looking at the unit's report, and I'm yelling, please tell me.
Please, please talk into the microphone. I can't hear you. Thank you.
I'll park her coming at you.
When I'm looking at North Parish, available budget is negative 18K. Then I'm looking at Federal Street, negative 53K. And then I look at Four Corners, and there's 20,000 left. And I look at Newton, and there's $330,302 available to be spent from their budget. Really? Capital.
Yeah. Well, that's what I said, some of those things would have in our first round of budget transfers. I have not posted those yet because of the time that from the original voting of those to the second round of the budget transfers that we talked about, the non-payroll, if you will. Since we've got contracts settled, I wanted to do it all at once, quite honestly, it's just a matter of efficiency, not doing it piecemeal. So those are all things that, once we do both rounds of personnel and non-personnel transfers, would address those. But again, with the anticipation of waiting on, once we do the final payments of the retros, it'll give us a even clearer view of things.
How far off do you think that is? Just, you know, ballpark?
I never want to ballpark, so I would, I would not want to hazard a guess just based on, you know, the, I'm kidding aside, I want to be very methodical about it, is what it is, that I want to, you know, when we go through with, you know, we did our first round of personnel transfers, but then now, and it's a good thing, and now we have contracts settled. So it's like we're almost, you know, to then do that along with the non-payroll expenses. But I'll say, rest assured, as far as FY '22 goes, I'm comfortable that we have cleaned up the FY '21 and FY '22 variances that we've been living with all this year for the condition of the information that was provided to me when I first started.
Okay, I look forward.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that?
She says she looks forward to it.
I look forward to that.
Oh, absolutely.
Further questions about fiscal year '21 for Mr. Bicat? Not hearing any, so let's go ahead with FY '22.
And nothing major on FY '22, other than since we voted and shared with you the number, for lack of a better phrase, backing into the mayor's number and the city-approved number. And we also have then shared with you the plans as they stand right now with the ESR funding and our intent of what we're going to use it. I'm now going through and, again, backing into that mayor's number that we will have. However, you know, we will then have an original approved budget number for us to use for running budget reports and everything, but as I've mentioned, we're going to be spending this entire summer rebuilding this budget because of all the ins and outs that occur of personnel. So that come September, you know, I usually shoot for the second meeting of September, maybe the first week in October, I would be presenting to you as close to real time as possible, an FY '22 budget that is, you know, as close to FY '22 reality since as, in the discussions regarding superintendency, Member Hollins mentioned that, you know, we begin building these budgets 20 months in advance. So this revised vote will give you, in a sense, the originally approved, say, a second blush from what it is that we'll do with the backing end of the ESR funds as we have right now, to then as close to real time as possible come September as to where it is at FY '22 stands. But it's all, I'll say, it's normal operating procedures where, you know, personnel changes are coming and we're just, you know, tracking those and doing the ins and outs, so.
Thank you. Questions from the committee about fiscal year '22? I'm not seeing any questions for you, Andy. Thank you for being patient with us.
My pleasure. Not a problem.
Okay. See you soon.
Yes, good to see you.
Now, for real, how are we going to do the?
Oh, you'd be amazed.
I have no doubt you have a plan. I'm just so.
Of course.
I should, while we're getting ready here, I should, for the viewers at home, there, I've been seeing a number of questions come up because my phone is going crazy over social media posts and texts and whatever else is coming in, and a number of them have indicated that the sound quality for folks listening at home is horrible right now. We are doing our best with what is, I would call, a backup of a backup system to actually broadcast this meeting tonight. So I do apologize for that, but we're actually, I'm kind of amazed we're actually live. So thank you to Dr. Hul for setting up her, I won't call it a Rube Goldberg WebEx meeting, but it's close. And our next item on the agenda, something, something I'm really looking forward to, something that we have been wanting to really focus on in terms of our steps forward as a, as a school district, is to talk about the communications and strategic communications of the district. And we are working with TMS in this capacity as well, and Justin Martin from TMS is here to walk us through tonight some of the things that he's been doing to get us to this point and move us forward. So go ahead, Justin. Thank you for being here.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone in person for change rather than, and put some real life together.
For sure.
Yes, so I'll go quickly through this because I know it's already been a long and exciting meeting. But just to give you the strategic communications update, Dr. Hul, if you go to the, so one of the things I wanted to sort of remind the committee and perhaps those watching, that our, our goals in communications are really to help improve community-wide understanding of complex issues, of course, build trust and credibility for the school system. We're honest and transparent to a patient. And improve internal organizational leadership capacity for executive coaching and using internal communication strategy. Sometimes that's overlooked in terms of how does communications work impact the school system, helping staff communicate with those above them and helping those leading the school systems communicate more effectively with their staff and certainly with parents and communities at large. And then obviously helping school committees and leadership teams work cohesively together, particularly on sensitive issues, and then long-term visions and missions for school districts. And then, of course, helping attract and retain high-quality professionals. And then for some levels of school systems, particularly ones like Greenfield, we're concerned with how our competition might throw some students away, what are some of the strategies that we can put in place to recruit and retain student populations? But our objective specifically right now is improving the flow of information to our community, which is something that when we did our audit, we identified as there was some, some lacking there. And then certainly to raise the awareness, understanding, appreciation of the Greenfield public schools. And too often we find, and this isn't, this is not specific to Greenfield, but in my work over the last 20 years, I've seen this, school systems and school committees get so focused because you're all living this work, you're really following it, that you're assuming that the general public and the community at large is following it semi-closely or as closely as we are. And so part of my role is to continue to remind us that we have to continue to push out this information. As we're putting together communications plan, I wanted to touch briefly on a couple of areas, one being, one area that we're working on in internal communications processes, and I will get to a slide in a minute that sort of articulates this, a communications calendar internally so that we're thinking six months ahead and we're being proactive for things. In many school systems that I work with, our principals and perhaps sometimes even our superintendents are like, oh yeah, that's right, that's tomorrow, what are we going to do about that? And helping us all start to think six months in advance, a year in advance, and having those calendars in place. Certainly with our community at large, asking our parents and students and those that don't have students in the school system, what they think about us, where we need to improve, continually having, not surveying every week or every month, but three or four surveys a year that our community looks for, to give them a voice and to remind our school committee of some of the things that we often overlook of what's important to them. One area I joke about is, we don't always think about school lunch or transport or bus routes, but a lot of times those are more important to them than, with all due respect to the superintendent search, those are sometimes more important than the superintendents. And then certainly the last piece of this is working with school committees to make sure we're adhering to open records, open meetings laws, and that we're working on media relations policies. And then also, when we met a few months ago, a few meetings ago, there was interest from this committee, how we improve our own community outreach. When I mentioned internal processes, this was something that we identified was lacking in Greenfield public schools, is when there's an incident in the school, whether it's directly impacting students, or if it's impacting the community and it just happens to be in the same neighborhood as the school, a lot of times parents will get anxious or nervous or want to know what's happening. And so one example I often use is that there can be an ambulance that comes to the house that's across the street from a school. But parents drive by, they see an ambulance in front of a school building, and now they think that one of the students or teachers or something's happened. When we see that, to make sure we identify that, we'll report out to our, not just internally, but to the superintendent, so the superintendent can relay it to each of you, so that when you get a call from someone in the community that says, hey, what just happened? There's ambulances outside, you know, is everyone okay? That you're able to say, oh, yes, the principal and superintendent spoke with me, but that happened about an hour ago, and that was not related to the school system. You know, it's amazing how those little pieces can really help communities understand, school committees and school communities understand each other a little bit better.
I'm going to interrupt you, Justin, because we do have an example that happened here across the street from the middle school, just a couple of months ago, the funeral home caught on fire. And everything was piled, you know, all the trucks and ambulances or whatever piled in front of the middle school. And there was a chain of communication that happened, and I, I don't know, if Dr. Hul probably does these things in her sleep, but I don't know, but I did get a call to say, you know, because in Greenfield, just like lots of other places, people see something like that and they know, well, I know Amy, I'm going to call her, she must know what's going on at the school. And yeah, exactly. It was so helpful because I did actually get questions later that day, what's going on at the middle school? No, it was Costanci across the street. And not knowing would have been so much worse than just being able to say, no, it wasn't even a school thing. So I appreciate that this is a very, very real world example.
And this is one of the ones that to some of our principals and directors and leadership team, it's intuitive that you say, hey, this just happened, I'm going to call my superintendent or quality school committee chair and let them know. To others, they just go on with their day because it doesn't involve them or they're dealing with, you know.
That would be me. I'd be like, I don't need to tell, why do I need to tell anyone?
But we did implement this process about three months ago, I think, with our principals and directors, so, you know, it'll, it'll take some time to stick, but this is one of the areas that shows how we put those internal communications.
So this is, that was a really helpful example. Thank you.
Dr. Hul. This is not a Greenfield issue, but this is one from a number of years ago that I worked on in Cambridge, but I mentioned surveys. And if you look at the very first list there, in 2007, we did a survey of parents in the community and asked them if they thought it was true that Cambridge's system limited educational opportunities for middle school kids. And in 2007, 24% of our parents strongly believed this statement. Over two years' time, with better communication and sharing of information and making parents and others aware, to see that we did the same survey in 2009 and we moved that dial. Now, we didn't move that dial huge numbers, but I would suggest that 6% to that particular question. Or again, if you look at any of the questions really there, how we moved that. And that's an example of not just the communications plans effectiveness and the strategies that we use, but the importance of having those surveys in place to really drive educational philosophies as well. One of the areas that I'm also working with on our schools is the idea of what are we, what are we communicating? How often are we communicating? Who's communicating to the community at large? Dr. Hul, if you'll get the next slide. Some of you might remember this fine meet, but what we don't want to do is be spam. And the example I gave to a couple of the principals was, suppose you have two children and one's in, say, the elementary school and one's in the high school, and that one of the kids is involved in athletics and one of the kids is involved in performing arts, and you're all using the automated phone system. Well, now those parents at home, and perhaps some of you are familiar with this, you might be getting eight, 10, 15 phone calls a week about, hello, this is the Greenfield Public Schools, remember 2X? And after a while, they're just not even paying attention to what they're reading and it's going to voicemail, they're not even listening to the voicemails. And putting some strategies and some algorithms in place to say, what are we using these tools for and why are we using them? There was one example where we found, this was a number of years ago, a family had four kids in the middle school and the high school, and they had brought to my attention, do you realize I'm getting 16 phone calls a week from the high school alone? And especially in the larger districts, people don't think that way. Greenfield is the right size to kind of adjust this a little bit. But that's, again, that's one of the areas, whether it's email, phone calls, robo-systems, what are we using it for? How often are we using it? And how do parents want to receive the information? And I'm going to talk about social media a little bit later, but these are the four areas that we think are most effective right now for us. And certainly with Facebook is the one where most of our parents are. I love to use the analogy that Mark Zuckerberg set this up as a dating app for college kids. The last thing expected was that all of us, 40-somethings and 30-somethings would be using it to track if our kids were in school, or what the latest gossip was from our high school or middle school and so forth. Certainly LinkedIn has a, has a use that a lot of school systems have not tapped into yet, but there's some opportunity here for us to make stronger connections with our business community as well. And then also, but we'll see it a few slides later, in the surveys that we did in the committee about who uses Twitter and who uses Facebook, you'll find that none of our parents are on Twitter. Like, we might be, but really with the statistically data, the survey shows that there's not really a reason for us to be on there. I always, I use this with principals all the time, but I thought I would take this as a quick little professional development 101 with us as a school committee, is that when we're talking to the media, I tell all of our principals and our superintendents and school committees to always be honest and be prepared, be willing to educate. Certain times, you know, newspapers, young reporters come in, they need to learn a lot of this, so be willing to take the time to talk to them. And certainly to use email, if you're afraid that you're going to get misquoted, then use an email to have a statement that they send through. And to never say no comment. I mean, in today's day and age, as soon as someone says no comment, it seems like we're not telling the truth or we're hiding something. And the last one being that when we use last question, oftentimes reporters will ask us, you know, is there anything else you'd like to say? And that's a chance for you to say, well, I have a question. You know, are you familiar with this? And it can kind of turn the interview process along. So, but we can talk about these types of pieces a little bit later in the process of upcoming meetings. So I mentioned surveys and parents and community members, and oftentimes we're asked, well, how do we know? how do we know how well we're doing as a school system? Well, we have to ask. When we did the survey two months ago, I wanted to show you that we did get a fair representation from the community. 335 respondents, 279, you know, answered this question, and this particular one, 56 skipped it. But you'll see that we got 80% of our respondents were parents in the school system, we had 70% of our parents were teachers or sponsored teachers, and then unfortunately, we did not get a lot of people outside the school system, but that's not unusual for us in these. We asked which school they attended. We also asked a number of other demographic questions, which I did not include in the presentation, but I'll share with each of you through the school committee chair, that checked on, what are the age of our surveys, you know, did they rent or own their home, you know, how long they lived in the school system, in the area. But you'll see with this one, we did get a pretty good cross-representation from across the school system. One of the questions we asked that I thought was important for us, how important is it that Greenfield provides consistent and clear information to about programming? You'll see that 90% of our parents think this is extremely important, it's very important. That's a key reminder in this process that they want information from us. When we asked how satisfied they are, we saw that 24% are very satisfied, which is great, 43% are satisfied. But when you look at those other numbers, 10, 15, 5, and add them together, you're talking about one out of every three, one of our four of our parents says they're not happy, they want to make sure we improve some of those efforts. This one, again, we see that 27% of our respondents, that they feel somewhat informed, but they'd like to know more. 33% say they feel informed most of the time, so those are good numbers, but certainly areas for us to improve on. And this one always makes me smile a little bit, because we think that things like administration, organizational management updates are interesting, or school staff news, but really, as I mentioned, most of our community, the things they're most interested or they care about is the calendar events, listings, student news, school department updates, and then school committee policies and actions. And we see rationale, decision by school leaders too. And I know that some of the school committee members, it talked about, can we start to put out more press releases, news releases on school committee actions? And it's something that we can work, share as well on, in terms of what we produce, you know, after each of our meetings, what kind of updates to present to our. And this one really points you to where they're getting their information from right now. They go to the website, the email teacher and staff, they call the school, and then, you know, 5% are going to Facebook first for looking for that school information. And when we said, which are the funds you primarily use to keep informed, they're still relying on email, which is not surprising, the website, newsletters, and then automated phone calls. And you'll see Facebook there is at 32%. One of the things that's interesting, you've looked down to, I mentioned Twitter is at 2%, the Greenfield Recorder sadly is at 8%. So sometimes when we see stuff that's in the recorder, we assume everyone has seen it, but the data is showing us that they're more likely to see this if we put it on Facebook and put it on our website. And certainly where they would prefer to see information, you see a large number of parents would like to get text messages. Certainly the school website is a priority. Again, you'll see Facebook, and then that discrepancy between social media being Facebook and the recorder there. And looking at how effective are the information resources in finding answers to the questions, we see that 38% to 39% of almost 40% say very effective to extremely effective. But you'll see there's 47% somewhat effective and 12% not so effective, so there's area for improvement there as well. So our next steps in this process is continuing to build the brand for the Greenfield Greenfield Schools. And branding is not an advertisement or a logo or those types of things, it's really the connection to the community that we want to strengthen through the surveys and internal communications, implementing that communications plan that I mentioned, and then working with the school committee to improve our community outreach plans, their understanding, awareness, appreciation of the work that you're all doing. So I promised I would be as quick as I could with the hour being late and the questions happening.
Amy has stepped away for a moment, but does anyone have any questions for us?
I don't know that this is the appropriate time to have this conversation. We can talk about it via email. I find that people are very much on Facebook, so that was surprising that they say they go to the website first. It often comes up that people are asking questions on Facebook that should actually be done in a very transparent email type of way, and I feel unsure of how to handle those situations. I've been accused, and we have all been accused of not being transparent because we're not monitoring Facebook to answer questions. And I don't know how to handle that better, because I absolutely want to be a pretty transparent person in general. I want to make sure we're doing that, but Facebook is difficult to monitor, it's a giant thing in the world with millions of tiny groups, millions of people. So it's something I think about a lot in our communication and our goal to reach our community. Like I said, it's not my place to ask that question, or it's something we can talk about via email, but.
Yeah, happy to continue the conversation offline, but at least for answering for the public here, I would say that we've seen a number of school systems have an official Facebook page, where a number of the staff are trained, and I'm usually part of that group that will help assist and answer questions that come up. And also dependent on, you know, we have some communities where they have what I'll call like an angry parents Facebook page, they just want to complain about everything. But that was born out of the fact that there was no, there was a void of an official Facebook page. So once we create a page that we're able to put out policies, procedures, and rationale, and just keep that in place, that that can become one of those areas for frequently asked questions, and take some of the strain off of the school committee members, so that you can either redirect parents to the official page, or certainly, you know, copy and link and send them. But we can talk more as we put that communications plan together, to figure out, you know, what we as a committee wants to do and take that.
Thank you, that actually, that I think is part of our issue, there are so many things that are not one part. Thanks for getting those in.
I would have the, not only Justin, but also Keith Markle and the mayor's office have both been like, you don't have a district-wide Facebook page? That would really help with the brand presence, rather than just the silos of the individual schools. So I think that's one thing we can work on real quick.
One of the things I would suggest is that we can work on that over the summer, and have it for a launch for back to school, but also having that, some processes and some common agreement on what is and what's not appropriate for that page, what's going, who's going to run it, put all that stuff in ahead of time before just bringing it up pragmatically, I guess is what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, Vice Chair Exstrom and then Secretary Johnson.
No, I was just wondering, I think Glenn wants.
Thank you. Thanks for this, this is great. I guess my question is, since most people are turning to the website and email, are we, I mean, this conversation has been held on, I don't really know what is going with this, but are we wanting to increase the amount that people find information about the schools on Facebook? Or are we thinking, they're already there, they're having these conversations, they're wanting a response from people? I just am wondering in terms of our strategy, is it to try to increase our social network presence, and what is the goal of that if people are already coming to us through email and the website?
I think that the, you know, from my professional recommendation would be to improve the website to a point where information is as easily accessible as possible. And with the school committee, that would certainly be on policies, so that when a parent has a question, they know they can go to the official Facebook page, or the official, or on the website, and find what they need really quickly. And then certainly there'll still be other questions, but if you look at many websites now, the user experience is such that you go in, you might spend five, 10, 20 minutes trying to search for something, you get frustrated, and then you say, I can't find anything, so then they fire off an email to one of you as elected officials, or they take it out to the principal and so forth. So I think the real goal would be as much information as we can put up there that is easily accessible, and is really, again, easy for parents and community to find.
Other discussion. So I think in terms of next steps, Justin, we do need to kind of discuss more of this in detail. I'd like to identify a way to do that at the subcommittee level, and I kind of want to create a new subcommittee, but I kind of don't. And I think that is really the only hesitation I have about getting started with this work. As I've told you before, and I've mentioned in these meetings before, I'd like to definitely be a part of that myself. I'd also like to include Keith from the mayor's office, who's indicated he wants to help us move forward. And I don't know how to actually structure what we do moving forward, in terms of the official structure of it. I'm looking at Glenn because he's our, kind of, our crew around the organization and the structuring of the committees and everything. And then I guess I have a question, and then a comment. So the communications plan, we've worked collaboratively with you on that and the superintendent, and really, we're looking to develop that with as many stakeholders as possible. Can you talk a little bit more about how that gets developed further?
Yeah, the communications plan would be based on our 12-month school calendar, you know.
Start there with the calendar piece.
Start with the calendar, what are the cases that we want to accentuate? And then, you know, for example, if we want the community to understand the school budget, oftentimes I hear from school committees and from city councils that, you know, I'm aggravated because no one pays attention to our school budget, but they only hear about the school budget in March or April, right before it's going to pass. So some of that is starting to work with, say, your finance director, or with the town, with the city's finance experts as well. Let's start explaining some of the budget process in September, October, November, so it's not hit over the head at the last minute, or why certain things cost so much, or what the bid process is, or how a budget is built.
Or the difference between capital and concrete.
Yes. And so some of it is identifying what are the key areas that we want to effectively communicate, you know, and usually that starts with a budget, and some of our policies that are in transportation, and those sorts of things.
And then my comment is, and I mentioned to this to you, and you and I talked one-on-one about the survey results, is I feel like we did a really good job getting a survey of our white, middle-class families. And we need to go further, and you and I have talked about the community outreach piece of this, and putting that into motion. I'm envisioning really wanting to prioritize putting a mechanism in place, putting a, not a mechanism, but putting a process in place, or maybe it's a program specifically, where we actually have a presence at our housing developments, where, like Greenfield Gardens and Oport, and the places where folks are likely to be more homebound. And I also would like to figure out where else we can do outreach, that we're getting these families, maybe it's at Community Action, one of our nonprofits in the area, something like that. Is that something you see other school districts doing, and do you help with developing those programs?
Yes, as I mentioned, I'm part of this, I do see some of the work given the school committee's outreach plan as well, and having that be connected closely to the district's communications plan, strategic communications plan, and that, and reaching all of our audience and going to all of our community is a really important part of that, in developing what strategies and tactics. There are some small communities, for example, that I've worked with, where, and forgive the, you know, the boonies kind of joke to this, but I have some school committees where one of their plans was, okay, every school committee member, once a month, is going to go to the transfer station, because everyone goes there on Saturday to dump their trash, and that's where I'm going to reach.
We could do that here.
And so there is, there are those, you know, but when you have the Green River Festival, or if you have other things that, you know, that link back and to tie in those community calendar events to our communications plan and say, okay, well, Susan's going to go to this event in October, and Glenn's going to go to this event in November, and I'm going to hit this event in January, so there's a constant outreach there.
Thank you. So that's really helpful, because now I'm thinking, oh, Greenfield Recreation, the EPW, we want to partner with them more anyway. So yeah, I'll sit at the transfer station like I did for like 45 minutes in line on Saturday. Yep. There was a big line on Saturday. Member Collins, comment or question? Go ahead, use your mic.
Yes, I have a couple. One is, last of all, and you can just answer, three questions. One is, the discussion about internet assumes that all the people we want to communicate with have the equipment and internet connectivity, and also the knowledge on how to use some of these programs. I think we have a high poverty population, I'm not sure if everyone has the equipment, what do you do about that? My second question is, we have two significant subgroups in our community whose home language, I think, is not English, and what do you do about that? And the third is, I've seen examples of school committees, but one of the issues that I hear is that the school committee isn't connected enough to what goes on in the schools. And I write about school committees where each member is kind of only a part of the school, and goes to their, you know, the committee, so that there's some, you don't have to petition individual members, there's some closer communication, and what do you think about that?
And I would just say those are all really valid points, and that we would incorporate each of them into that communications plan.
Yeah, and we do, we do have a sizable Spanish-speaking population, and then a uniquely Russian-speaking population here. So, and we do have processes for getting things translated for both, so I think it's just a, it's part, making sure those things get included in our communications plan as well. So, Justin, what do you recommend are our first next steps here from this point forward?
I think at least for the, at the school committee level, would be to, for you all to see where this fits into one of your existing subcommittees. Sometimes it falls into governance, sometimes it falls into, you know, if you have a community outreach or a communications subcommittee, as you suggested, it would be, I would be reluctant to start another committee subcommittee, or suggest that, but if you have one there, then that work can continue. Certainly if you have an incoming superintendent, then we'll want to take her lead on where she wants to go with this as well, and what that relationship looks like with the school committee. And I'll continue the work in the meantime with the principals and directors to get them up to speed on the internal pieces, and to bring forth more of a final communications plan for the school system, for your review and feedback on as well.
Great, that sounds great. So what I'd like to do, one thing I want to mention in public session so that all are aware is, I have had preliminary discussions about TMS, our contract with them continuing, at least for some time, to continue working with Justin as we move forward, even after we, it's hard to say it, but after we've shed our need for an interim superintendent, and perhaps some of our other needs have gotten smaller, that we would continue working with you at least set up months a month, similar to the contract that we have now. And then the other thing I'd like to do to get started on the next steps is I'd like to work with Vice Chair Exstrom and Secretary Johnson, we thought, to figure out which subcommittee and how to get this moving forward, because I do want to prioritize it. Would you two be willing to chat with me about that?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Member Collins, last comment?
Last comment. You might consider when you start thinking about subcommittee, one of our structures is a special advisory committee where there is a member or two from the school committee, but then it isn't just school committee members, and you could open it up to someone from GSED and someone from the Russian community, whatever, and go that direction.
Perfect, yes, thank you for reminding me of that. Yes, absolutely.
I'll just put a plug in for our Romanian speakers out there.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes.
Wait, Secretary Johnson, do you speak Romanian?
Well, Romanian, Dovin.
Dovin, yeah, yes, there's a very sizable Eastern European population in our district, in our community, and the languages are more than just Russian, that is absolutely true. That is absolutely true. That is my ethnocentrism. So, Justin, thank you for not only being here tonight and for this presentation, but also for your patience as we work to get to you in our schedule.
My pleasure.
I look forward to moving forward with all of this stuff. So thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we? We are on summer work, right? Yes, so interim superintendent report, summer work. Dr. Hul.
I'm out from behind the camera. Who knew?
So impressive. I don't know if Nick's listening in from the studio, but he may be higher than you.
I've been asked. So I just wanted to kind of update the committee on things that have already been happening some months. I also, in full disclosure, the superintendent's work in a very small world, and so I do know Dr. DeBarge, and we have worked together as colleagues, and I think it will be a very smooth transition between the two of us. And I think that, you know, I think she will do a great job moving through public schools. I have followed her career for a lot of years in both Massachusetts and Connecticut, and I think you've made a great choice, and it will be my privilege to pass the baton when time comes. So thank you for that. But I just wanted to make sure that, in full disclosure, that everybody did know each other.
And I should add, just for everyone who's following along, that your report that you're going to, I think, refer to right now is included in tonight's materials for, for the meeting. Go ahead.
So just to update you, Karen Patnold has assumed her position as Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and within 24 hours of your approval of my appointment, I got a three-page set of random thoughts, as she called it, of lots of ideas she had already been thinking about, questions that she had to ask. So she has really just dug in and jumped right in with both feet, ready. She has met with all of the principals to kind of get the lay of land from where they sit, that she feels like she's got a real sense of the district, getting her into the grants world and, you know, getting her acclimated to that. She and I actually wrote the ESR2, or S R2, whichever way you want to say it. We wrote that grant together and gave them all, submitted to the state at Serra, so we've been, you know, really starting to work on that. I named Jonathan Cavalo, who is the associate principal at Greenfield High School. We had two, and we got to one again. So Jonathan is the acting principal. While a search is underway, Karen is leading the search for her successor with a committee of parents, teachers, and students, so that they're doing the initial process. I've asked for two to three names. Now that we know that Dr. DeBarge is the appointee of the school committee, certainly, I will work very closely, because this really should be her appointment. Even if it does happen, I still have to ink the contract, it really needs to be somebody that she is behind, so I want to make sure that that happens. We also have a couple of vacancies at the central office level in terms of director of facilities and grounds and food service director that also need to be filled, and again, she will be part of those processes. So I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that. So we have begun the process of posting for positions within the district, and some of them will be coming from Easter funds, take some intervention, as if you remember from the budget presentation that we did when we did the first reset, you know, being funded out of Easter three, because we do have to deal with learning loss. So we are in the process of trying to get a posting ready for those positions and get some folks who will both coach teachers but also provide direct services to students in the areas of reading and math in the elementary schools, so that they've got that little helping hand. In terms of capital projects, we have started working on some things, and since I seem to be the de facto director of buildings and grounds at the moment, the asbestos flooring project at Discovery School for Corners has begun. I got a call from the contractor today stating that they found some kind of mysterious material under a layer of tile that they are willing to be testing. I don't know what that means, the cost of the project, but certainly they aren't going to do their due diligence with regard to what they have found, and he's going to keep me informed in terms of that being done. Bids were just received for the Newton parking lot project. They came in under budget, which was a good thing to have happen, so I'm just waiting on a contract to come from the bid, and then I'll sign that and get purchase order up and running.
And I believe it was a local contractor.
Yes, the city debt reporter.
Yes, yes.
So that's also, you know, great that we can support a local business while we're at it. They were low bid, and so we're a little more, it's kind of taking the lead, which is very helpful to me, for sure, because I don't know a lot about asphalt. But anyway, so that, we're looking at, probably that will happen sometime in August, in that we get at least the base of the parking area there as well. We are looking at the repair and replacement of the elevators at Federal Street School, which is actually another big ticket item. And Mr. Parquet has had some engineers come in and take a look at the elevator system, and they've gone back to take some photos, so that, you know, what we're dealing with, probably not going to get to that project this summer, because it's pretty extensive, but at least the preliminary work will have been done, so that way, you know, when the time comes, that we can move forward with that. One of the elevators actually will need to be fully replaced, the other one needs some repairs, so it's my hope that we can just get the upside done, you know, before the start of school. And then we've looked, started our summer programming, and so we've got extended school year programs for special needs students happening at Greenfield High School right now. Middle School also has some extended learning time funds, as does Newton School, and so there's some summer programming that's being offered for students from those two places. We have had a difficult time trying to retain nurses, so all of the programs right now is happening at Newton High School and Title I, because we're just not able to provide it in multiple buildings. Some of the extended school program is happening at the Academy of, I'm going to consolidate between building projects and also the nursing issue. It's, you know, it's been a tough year for teachers and staff, and we took a look at the budget and actually how much money we were paying people, we needed to incentivize people to come this summer. And my colleagues in the belly have expressed the same issues, so it's not unique to me. It's just been a difficult year for everybody, and people just felt like they needed a break. So certainly understanding that. And then based on the conversation that we have around the budget and looking at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's initiatives with the multi-tiered systems of support and this sort of acceleration roadmap, that we're not looking at remediation, but we're looking at where are there skill gaps, where, how can we keep kids on track, not go backwards, but go forwards, and do the work that needs to be done. So last week ago today, as a matter of fact, and that was the entire academic side of the senior leadership team in a full day retreat, and so we did some data analysis together to get some test scores, and also worked at instructional practices at that tier one, which is the radio classroom, which is where we build, keep it up, which should be part of the instructional coaches when they're doing the coaching side of that. And so, you know, took a look at those things, and obviously I'll work with Christine, basically the youngest, and we'll work with Christine, make sure that, again, that bridge built moving forward. I do have to say, I was extremely impressed with the thoughtful dialogue of the principals, the director, and the technology person, who really came together, and the feedback I got from them was that it was time well spent, of course, the fact that I bought them lunch, my best, I'm just kidding, just kidding. But they thought it really was time well spent with them, so I was also a part of university data wise, so that we could really just kind of begin to dig into data and think of what we're looking at, does it mean? And then taking a look at one of my favorite people, John Havy, who's the instructor at New Zealand, who's done a meta-analysis of about 17,000 studies on effective influences on student learning and what happens when a common classroom can beef that up based on that research. So we really did have some thoughtful conversations together, and, you know, it was just kind of fun to watch them interact and engage with each other beyond trying to figure out how we're going to get kids back into school and doing logistics, which is pretty much all the other work that we've done, so it was nice to be able to have those thoughtful discussions together. So, you know, Christine comes on board, spread the needle, and, you know, when she and I talked individually, as I did with the other candidates, let them know that this was the conversation that we had had in the, you know, sort of resetting of the budget, that this was the direction that we were really looking to. All three of them seemed very excited about it, so I think that no matter who you had chosen, you will be able to do that. I know that Christine's done a lot of work in this, in current position, so I think that, again, it needs to transition between everybody. So that is my report.
Thank you. Are there questions from the committee about the superintendents? Secretary Johnson, go ahead.
Dr. Hul, we've met another big milestone tonight in terms of your time with us. I think of like getting the kids back in school and now having, you know, voted tonight on a new superintendent. I'm just wondering, I'm assuming you have experience with this from before, but I'm not sure, in terms of the transition from interim to a new permanent superintendent, and anything you can tell us about kind of what to expect, and any advice for us as school committee members going through that process?
I think, again, it's, it's sort of that threading of the needle, to make sure that, you know, when we talked about in the budget and, you know, looking at the resources pointing in the direction of multi-tiered systems of support, that model is pretty well in place already in East Windsor at Dr. DeBarge's direction, so I think for her to be able to take it to the next level, I think will, you know, be really helpful. So I think in terms of the two of us working together, we've worked together before, so it's a case of making sure that she's fully included in all decisions that are made moving forward at this point, and until she assumes the role. And then, you know, as I mentioned to Chair Paredes, we are on that I'm certainly going to not just walk away into the sunset. I might skip, no, just kidding. But I am not going to fade off into the sunset, that I will be available to be assistant as she assumes the role and just needs, you know, questions asked and inserted, those kinds of things. So I think as a school committee, my hope is that it would be about as seamless as it could be, so, you know, we're hardly known as a flipper, that's my part of the gift, I guess, to you.
Thank you. Member Collins, go ahead.
I'm delighted that you're already looking at the ESR funding to support mercy for children that need that. I had a question since you brought up the ESR funding. Is all the ESR funding from the second and the third doses already planned out, going to be used, or is it still? And if so, can the school committee know the plan? The reason I'm asking is the third dose, third amount, is quite sizable. There's, you know, a couple of things on my mind, I don't know about other people, we talked about the building issue today, but I'm also thinking about, you know, some HR needs, or some special needs of many children. I'm just wondering if there's a chance to have input or some suspension of that at all? Because it's such a sizable supplement.
Well, as it presented to the committee, we talked about the FY22 budget, a minimum of $10,000 has to be spent out of ESR2 for students' behavioral needs. So when we took a look at actually what was proposed back when I first came on board to you, some of those priorities have just shifted from the general fund, especially after the loss of $693,000, into that grant. So it's going to support some of the social justice things that people were working on, because we want to make sure that those needs are taken care of, because those do have a huge impact on students, as well as the prevention program that Karen Patnold had presented to you, and something they want to bring into the high school, making sure that there is some grant funding to support that, but to make sure that we support that, and so we'll be ESR funds to do that as well, as well as to think about looking at some materials to support once we make some decisions around curriculum, once you make some decisions, I guess I changed the pronoun, around curriculum and instructional materials to support in those funding charts and mathematics district wide, that there's some money set aside, that seed money to get those things up and running. We have not fully figured out ESR3 yet, we're still working on that. Each one of these grants are multi-year grants, when you get them from federal, I mean, about 27 months in which to spend the funds. So ESR2 actually could have been spent in fiscal 21, but we felt like we were in a decent enough spot that made sense to hang on to the funds and use them forward. So in the back of our minds, we're thinking, that's probably over two years. We have the ESR3, which is $4 million plus a little more, I just got a, I just got a thing yesterday, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but there are some additional funds coming through, ESR3 as well, but that, you know, looking at that for a full 27 months, which means you would have this fiscal year, or next year, and then into the following of September.
So into 2024?
Yes. So that you've got some time, because obviously, some of the things that are happening right now are things that you may wish to continue, and it would give you some time to think about sustainability, and when this money dries up, how are you going to deal with those, those issues and those things? For example, if instructional coaches and intervention physicians are proven to be effective, and obviously, data should be collected and worked at around those things, if those are proving effective in student achievement, how would you support them? Use your farm right now to fund those positions. So that's kind of the thinking in our head is, part of it was, we did not want to do any harm to students from the loss of the local funds, and we had to, we want to make sure that students' interests were taken care of in that process, but then, you know, moving forward, what some of the sustainability is. So I do believe that Dr. DeBarge, and as we can talk about those things within this cabinet, will probably want to sit with the budget committee and just present our thoughts to you, and then react and give us feedback.
Thank you. And from listening to Andy talk about FY22, when he initially came back backing into the mayor's, it didn't seem like, it did seem like he had some basic sketches of where that money would be used in FY23, FY24. So, and you're talking similarly, so y'all have a plan, even if we can't totally see it yet.
Right, okay. And basically, we will apply for the money all at once, but grants can be amended, it's a pretty easy process, so, you know, we'll put some things in as placeholders, get ESR3 in, because this will get the funds approved, this will have assistance. And then certainly, the process you all decide that, you know, some things need to be tweaked a little bit, then there's an easy process to win the grant.
Member Wall, go ahead.
Hold on, just one, I'm going to get unmuted.
You need to be unmuted, please hold. There you go.
There you go.
I have a boring question. In the capital projects, are you working on fixing the fencing?
That, um, there's also some Verizon work that's happening around the fencing. So some lines in there that need to be dealt with. So I think that's a first priority. And I do know that DPW is working on that. And then we'll go from there in terms of then working on getting that project at least started. So, but we want to be mindful of the work that needs to be done. Because there's no sense of doing the fencing, the rip part of it out of Verizon, I think, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Member Wall? Any other questions or comments from the school committee? All right, so, thank you, Dr. Hul. That was great. We are to the point where we finished our public session agenda. And I would like a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to FGLC 30A, subsection 21, a exemption number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and of course I do declare. And yes, unfortunately, we will be coming back into open session. Fortunately, for the reason why we'll be coming into, back into public session, I should say. But unfortunately, for all who have to wait. Can I get a motion? It's almost in a second. I, even when they're sitting next to me, I don't know which did, I didn't see it. So, okay. And any abstentions or no's to moving into executive session?
Point of order, Madam Chair. In, going into executive session, you do have to do a roll call vote.
Oh, thank you.
It's not just a remote thing.
Can I get a roll call vote, please? Secretary Johnson Musat, see you have a little resting. I only did this twice before we went to remote land.
Sounds familiar. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins? Secretary Johnson Musat, I'm a yes. Chair Poretti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will go into executive session. We will take a, let's be in executive session at nine. Just so folks are clear who haven't joined us for this before, our executive session is out there in, in a different room. We'll come back here for our open session after.
Okay. I'm going to mute everything on this end of the WebEx moment, okay?
Okay, we are, we are back from executive session. And I would like a motion to approve the administrative assistance settlement agreement as presented to the committee. That's from Member Hollins and a second?
Second.
Second from Member Karen. Any open session discussion? I would just like to thank Dr. Hul and Dr. Hollins, Member Hollins, and also Member Wall for working on this agreement and really making sure that it's in good place for years to come. So thank you for all that hard work. Any further discussion? Let's take a vote. All those in favor? That looks unanimous to me. Motion to adjourn, please. Member Karen in a second from Member Hollins. Does this have to be a roll call? Okay, any abstentions or no's? We are adjourned at 9:44 PM. Thank you, everyone.